Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners to order on today, Wednesday, April 1st. This is not a joke. 2020 in our complex room. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we start with the roll call, please, Diane?
Sure. Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Betias?
Present.
Commissioner Mrazin?
Present.
Aforum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Winski. I did not realize you were on, so thank you for doing that. Next on the agenda, we will consider today's agenda. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam President, I'd like to add two items to the agenda. One is Michigan City Courthouse, and then the other item is Consider Resolution Regarding the Timely Deposit of Funds and the Approval of Claims. With those additions, Madam President, I make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Moving on to the minutes of our March 18th meeting.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2020 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been approved. Next on the agenda, the consideration of claims. Auditor Winski.
Sorry.
There you go.
We have payroll ending March 27, 2020, in the amount of $1,189,026.56, and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $1,107,486.66.
Madam President, I make a motion to adopt these claims as presented.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Thank you. Dr. Cora, before we start public comment, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, as we all are dealing with coronavirus situation all over the country, it has had some health consequences, obviously. We have had so many people in our country who have died from this illness, and I'm going to address that later, but there have also been some significant economic consequences. The economy has come to a sudden stop. Thousands of people have become unemployed, and there are projections by financial experts that the unemployment rate may go up to anywhere from 15% to 20%, and some people have also said maybe even up to 30%. I mean, that will be a very, very difficult situation that we'll have to deal with. I feel that because of this sudden slowdown in the economy, property tax receipts and revenues are going to go down significantly. The boat, the casino is closed, so the revenues from the riverboat, which used to supplement us, they will go down significantly, and probably the expenses from the coronavirus will go up. We have been, Madam President, we have been planning this Michigan City Courthouse project for the past many years. There is no question that there is a need. We have to get it done sometime, but, and we have also been working with the bond council and the, and the bond council has been working with our LaPorte County Council, who have made some good recommendations about financing this project, and we were moving along, but the world has changed in the last two weeks. I mean, we are in a totally different world right now. Madam President, this economic downturn is one of the worst we have seen in our lives, and I would urge you and Commissioner Mrazinski to seriously consider putting this project on hold until such time when the economy improves. And I know that there are many individuals who have put in a lot of effort into this project. I appreciate the efforts of our council colleagues, friends and colleagues on the council, our auditor, who has put in an extraordinary amount of effort, our sheriff, the judges, the probation department, they have all put in a lot of effort into it, our building manager, consultants. We have gotten great cooperation from Mayor of Michigan City, the common council of Michigan City. But having said that, we are, these are extraordinary times. I wish we had time where we could have had a joint session with the council to make decisions like this, but since we saw all these projections yesterday and we were meeting today, I thought it would, it would be an appropriate time to pass a resolution to put a hold on this project. I think this is a prudent approach, and I would, I would request your consideration, and if it is adopted, I would like to forward this resolution to the council for their consideration, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Commissioner Mrazinski?
I agree that it's a responsible thing to do as a commissioner and also as a taxpayer. We need to reconsider. You're correct. I mean, if you look at it in your personal life, you hit the point, maybe you were going to buy a new house or a new car or something, and then something hits, what would you do? You'd back up and say, I better wait on this, and I think it's a responsible thing, not only as a taxpayer, but as commissioners, that we do that. And if that was your motion?
That's the motion, yes.
Then I will second your motion, sir.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to weigh in. You know, being a leader is a hard, a hard thing, but being a leader in tough times is even harder, because we have to make decisions that may not be particularly popular. The investment of the time, and I think of Auditor Winski and her team, I mean, they have spent five years or so, or more, on this project, and I want to assure everyone who's, has followed this project, that it doesn't mean that that effort has been wasted, so that it's, I think we should put a hard hold on it. It doesn't mean that the efforts are for naught, that we will be able to take the banner up eventually, but you know, at this time, we need to think of what's critical, what's essential, and while it is certainly essential that we eventually fix the problems in that courthouse, because some of them are health and safety issues, we're going to have to hobble along with that and focus on what's truly important, and that's the health and safety of our families, and certainly watching our tax dollars now is more important than ever before. So with that comment, I would ask for a vote on the motion that has been seconded, to pass a resolution, sending a resolution to the county council, asking them to consider the support of this hard hold to the courthouse project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been passed, and the resolution will go on to the county council.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Next on the agenda, public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Councilman Mike Rosenbaum.
Good morning.
Not sure if he hears me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you well.
I cannot speak for other members of the council in light of things coming within 24 hours, knowing that you have another meeting in two weeks. I still believe that there should have been a workshop, and I still believe that there should be one before our next meeting in order to discuss any changes to any of the financing. We followed your lead, the last one, in our last meeting. We had disputes that we kept quiet over the planning and the timing, and I think it's time that we not rush this through, because it doesn't matter when we go for the financing at this point. So 15 days later, one month later, is not going to make that much of a difference. So I'm disappointed that you've already passed a resolution to bring it to us, the council, and I just am going to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Madam President, I just wanted to comment on that. I appreciate Councilman Rosenbaum's comments, and you know, I also felt personally, if it were, these were ordinary times where we should have had a joint workshop and then, but I think even now, we are just, this is a suggestion from us, please take it and consider it, and then, we are not talking about financing or anything, that's your domain, and I would like for you to, to deal with the finance. All we are doing is putting a hard stop for right now till the economy improves, and once the economy improves, please move this forward, and we'll, we'll be there to support you in any which way we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
This is Frank Novak. Are you there?
Yes, absolutely.
President of the council, I just want to echo what Mike Rosenbaum said, that, you know, two weeks ago, when we had our meeting, the commissioners were all gung ho, wanted to get this done, we had to get it done, and now yesterday, without even consulting with the council, you know, you guys make a move without even calling a meeting or doing anything, and that's what's disturbing. So we're going to have our meeting, and we're going to talk, and hopefully we can come together on this, and that the commissioners can realize that we work better together than just doing what was done yesterday. So that's my comment.
Mr. Novak, Madam President, I just wanted to mention that it's our, it's our desire, obviously, you know, in times like this, we all need to be working together, and we will continue to work together because of the urgency of the situation, the way the economy is sliding day by day, and some of the numbers that were projected yesterday, which were not there two weeks ago, unfortunately, and so that's the only reason why we are taking this step, and this step is being taken in a way that would facilitate you taking, this ball has been set rolling, and it'll be, we'll be sending it to you, and then you can consider that, and then we can get together at the appropriate time, in the appropriate setting, and then continue to discuss this. Like Commissioner Betias said, we are not, not completely canceling this project, we're just putting a hold, and then when the economy gets better, we will just resume it.
And Commissioner Cora, I'm not disputing whether we should stop the project or not. That's not what this is about.
Okay.
Yesterday, we're on a conference call about the coronavirus. It would have been nice if one of the commissioners or the attorney would have reached out to us. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
But it's all about communication. With Corona, it's about communication. With financing this big project, it's about communication. We need to do much, much better for the citizens of LaPorte County.
Yeah. Mr. Novak, all I can say is I did participate in the meeting at that time. I didn't have, I haven't reviewed my emails yet. I was busy seeing patients, as you know, it's very, very busy time, and, but in the evening, when I looked at it and I reflected on it, I really felt uncomfortable moving forward with this, considering what a precarious situation we are in, in terms of the economy. And I'm hoping and praying that this is a short-term situation, and we'll get out of it quickly, and, but I, we understand your sentiments, and we appreciate it, and we'll work with you and make sure that, that we have a joint effort on this going forward.
So I feel I need to make a comment, because I was in the middle of all of that. In stressful times, we, instead of causing division, we need to pull together. What we did this morning was the sentiment of the commission. It is not a, it's a resolution. We did not pass an ordinance. We passed a resolution expressing the sentiment and our concerns about our financial responsibilities as taxpayers and as a county. We're passing it on, as you said, passing the ball to the county council, which I think is very appropriate as an elected body. But to go back to what actually happened yesterday, Mr. Friedman and I were having a conversation about some coronavirus procedures in a department, and I was calling for some counsel. We then began to talk about finances and the impact on tax dollars, and I asked him to do some research. We all got the research at the same time, so there was no decision, there, it was, I had a conversation, I asked him to check with our financial advisors, and he did that, and sent all of us, county council and county commissioners, the same information at the same time. So our action today is a reflection of our, our common sentiment, and we're passing it to the financial body, which is the county council. So there was no slate of hand, no, there should be no hurt feelings. We're all in this together, we're trying to make decisions. The finances of our whole country have shifted in the last two weeks.
Yes.
And we're, our sentiment today is to try to reflect that, to be conscientious elected officials, to be leaders, and ask the council to do what they need to do as part of the project team. So I just thought it's important to get our facts straight.
Thanks.
I just want to say one last thing, since we're talking. I agree, the council will do what they need to do, as we did two weeks ago, as we were asked to do. So communication is the key to everything. So we just need to communicate and work better together, instead of, all you got to do is reach out. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. I think, you know, communication is always, the more we can do, the better, and we'll, we'll take, take that into, and then we'll do, you know, we'll continue to work on it. Thank you, Mr. Novak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, is there, is there any further public comment before I move on? Any other public comment? All right, moving on to department reports and department head comments. Health Department is here, maybe we could hear from them first?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Just, I'll give you a brief of what the Health Department, Jenny's going to give you, what the nursing does, so I'm going to talk about, we still do food, sex, and environmental, believe it or not, we still inspect the restaurants, because they're still doing the dine-outs and carry-outs. We do have septic inspections still going, because that not stopped building. We still do water samples, because public water supply, I did, has not suspended that, so we still have the lab open doing water supply. And basically, we're still doing complaints, and we're getting all kinds of complaints of what we should be doing, and what we should be doing about Corona, so we're working diligently on this, so Jenny's going to give you an update of what the nurses are going through.
So before you leave, Mr. Menkuso, is there any support that's needed from a personnel perspective? We have other employees, perhaps, that whose duties have reduced. Is there a need for extra supporting your department?
I can tell you right now, the nurses, nurses are going to be needing help, are going to be, definitely needing some help. If we get more cases, we're going to be overwhelmed.
Could you please put together a request then, so we can figure out how to get the support to your department that you may need?
Yep.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I make one comment? You know, we have about six nurses, right? Who are able to, six nurses?
Me and five others.
You and five others, okay. So as you're putting your plan together, if there are some functions that are being done, which is more like, like reporting and things like that, or just like a clerical kind of work, that putting the data together, that somebody other than a nurse can do or can be of help to them?
Yeah, we talked about that this morning.
Yeah, yeah.
We're here.
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out what else we can, other department, other people in our office can help out with the nurses and all that. Right now, you know, as like I said, as the cases come along, they're going to be overrun pretty soon, so, but you know, we still got other staff members, are still doing other chores in the office too, so.
Yeah. The reason I'm mentioning is because as the number of cases go up, and the amount of contact tracing work that needs to be done, it goes up, I think they will be overwhelmed.
Right.
And so to the, to the extent we can get them some additional help within our staff, who can do some of the non-nursing or non-technical work, I think we should be able to.
Yeah, we've suspended some of the nurses programs, some of the programs.
Okay.
The only one we're doing is TV ratings, right?
TV and communicable disease.
Communicable.
Those are the only two we're doing. Everything else has been suspended.
Great. Thank you.
So this morning, we had another couple of cases reported, so we are up to 13 now. Every day, we get reports from the hospitals, from doctors calling. We check the NBS system, which is a communicable disease reporting system. We also check LEMSNet, which are the state tests. We have access to all those results as well, and I double, triple, quadruple check every day to make sure we're not missing any cases that may not be reported from the hospitals. It's just a, you know, a third kind of safety mechanism to make sure we're getting all of the reports that, that we need, because everybody right now is, has a lot of work on their plate, and the hospitals as well, so we just make sure we double, triple check. So every positive case that comes in, we do a thorough investigation on that person, and that's including contact tracing on every person that they've been around, from two to three days prior to their symptom onset, until all through while they're symptomatic, if they would have had contact with anybody. Then we follow up with all those contacts, give them instructions on quarantine, isolation, the hotline numbers to call if they don't have a doctor for testing. We email them information about quarantine and a checklist. Basically, all the instructions are given to them via email. If they don't have email, we read the entire thing to them on the phone. We have been finding that one contact investigation is taking about six to seven hours per client, which is a long time, and that's not just, and that's including the other work that we have to do as well. We follow all high-risk and low-risk contacts. So a low-risk contact would be someone that had a casual contact, like maybe me to you right now, this would be a casual. A close contact would be somebody that was within six feet of somebody for longer than 10 minutes, or somebody that you shared saliva with through kissing, sharing utensils, cups, et cetera. So that's basically our process that we do. Each contact, a high-risk contact, has to be quarantined for 14 days after the last contact with the case. So if it was today, it'd be 14 days from today, they have to stay quarantined and monitor their symptoms. And they know they can contact us with questions, we always leave our phone number, and they have called with questions, so it is working, the system is working. So that's basically.
Jenny, you know, these, some of the questions that are asked are, when you have a contact, whether it's high-risk or low-risk, they're self, they're in quarantine, they're self-monitoring themselves for symptoms.
Yes.
Are you also recommending that they go and get themselves tested?
Not until they become symptomatic.
Okay. Okay. So a lot of questions, Madam President, come up about testing, and so right now, even though the testing has improved over the last couple of weeks, but it's really still not where we need to be, and, and the hospital systems are still working, and hopefully we'll get there. But ultimately, if we really need to get a good handle on this, we need to be able to test every contact, and we need to identify the positives, and we need to isolate them. I think that's how we're going to win this war on this virus, so, and I, the reason I'm mentioning this is, I think those of you who are watching on television, I want you to understand that testing is still limited, even though the amount, the capacity is gradually being increased, and, but once we have a very good capacity, where anybody who wants a test can get it done, not just waiting till they become symptomatic, I think that would be the time, then we'll have a better handle on the situation.
I guess, Jenny, what is the compliance attitude around quarantine? Are you hearing from people that they're really grateful for the information?
Yes.
And that they're going to follow it, or they're saying, you know?
No, everybody, I can say 100% of them are on board.
Okay.
They're scared too.
Yes.
They don't want to spread this. This is serious, and they don't want to spread it, so.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, we're getting good feedback from our contacts.
Great.
Jenny, I want to thank you and your team for, I know this contact tracing is laborious work.
Right.
It's not easy, you know, you have to call people, sometimes they, they don't want to, sometimes, most of them cooperate, sometimes they don't cooperate, sometimes they're elderly, they can't hear properly, I mean, I can tell you, they're all, it's not easy, it takes a lot of time and effort, so I greatly appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that all of us share that sentiment, and please bring that back to the team.
Yes, I will.
For you and Tony, to make sure that everyone knows, I mean, you're in the, in the limelight, and certainly anything that, any extra people that you need, we'll, all the department heads are wanting to work together and support the work that you're doing, so it's, it's critical, and it's, we want to make sure that you have what you need.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, other department heads who wish to give reports at this time? I know we have some department heads on, on our Zoom, so feel free. If you could please just announce yourself and what your department is, so the people that are hearing this recording will understand.
Sure. Jane Bernard, Director of LaPorte County Animal Control.
Good morning, Jane.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just wanted to report that now, more than ever, pets are important in people's lives. The Healthcare Foundation put out the information that we could apply for emergency grants. Friday morning, I went ahead and submitted an application, put together a plan to provide food and emergency veterinary care to people that are affected by this and have lost their job. So we're hoping that anybody that feels that they're desperate and feels that they need to part with their pet, we don't want to see that happen, so if anyone needs any type of help, we want them to reach out to the shelter, and we will help them any way that they can.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, we often forget about the fact that we've got hungry animals, so that's, that's important. Thanks for being so resourceful, Jane and your team.
Thank you so much to the Healthcare Foundation. I mean, they relaxed their requirements, and if anybody is, you know, needing to apply, I highly recommend it, because it was such an easy process.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Healthcare Foundation link is on our website at laportecity.in.gov. If there's any, anyone out there that needs support for their organization, for a food bank, for supplies, et cetera, that's, they've really done a great job of being super responsive, so thank you, Jane, for that reminder.
They, we greatly appreciate it. So anyone that needs help, contact us.
Thank you. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Yes, Madam President. Members of the commission, this is Tony Rodriguez, Community and Economic Development Department.
Good morning, Tony.
Good morning, Tony.
I thought it'd be critical to bring to the attention of all of the public, the commission and the council that are in participation via Zoom here this afternoon, this morning. We are going to host, as a result of this epidemic, we're going to be hosting a interactive Zoom webinar tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM with the gracious assistance of Lori Felton of the Small Business Development Center, that is going to go to the heart of a lot of what Commissioner, Dr. Cora has just mentioned. No one could have anticipated what we are right in the middle of, and the impact that it would have on, not the entire economy, but the small business community that employs roughly 80% of all the workforce today. So we are going to have this, this interactive workshop with the small business community. We've been aggressively promoting it over the last, this last four, five-day period. It will be an opportunity for those to, to get intimately familiar with what they need to do to apply for not only the emergency disaster relief loan, but also the paycheck, paycheck protection loan program, or both of them at the same time. So this morning, I was in participating on a conference call with the Northwest Indiana Lido Committee, and the Regional Development Company did an outstanding job of summarizing both loan programs, and we'll be going through those tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM. In order for the listening public to register or participate in this function, all they need to do is go to the newly-launched laportecity.in.gov website, our newly-launched website, which Bailey McGrath has done a tremendous job of keeping updated with, with COVID-19 related updates. There's a streaming bar up top, they'll be able to, with one click, register, and it will link also to their calendar, and they'll be able to actively participate in this interactive session. So I thought it'd be important to mention to the viewing public, this essential program that's going to be a lifeline to so many at this important time.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I appreciate your being an innovative leader and making sure that we have that information. So that is on our website, so small businesses or anyone who feels that they could access some of this information will, can.
It's live now, it has been, for the past four days.
Great.
It's been live, and I just can't say enough how not only the task, the COVID-19 Task Force that has continually been providing information to Bailey in, which is then posting that. which is then posting that information live on the county's website. It's an awesome resource right now at a time when the public needs. The more information we can provide and the more answers we can provide, I believe that helps relieve stress. It helps, just as a lot of what's been mentioned this morning, that communication is critical. That website is, is an awesome tool, and there's a lot of information right now on what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time or give any updates?
Yes.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. McGuire?
Andrew McGuire from La Porte County EMS. I'd just like to give a, a public update about our department based on a few questions we've received lately. So our department is running at full strength. We're fully staffed, and all of our employees are pretty healthy. We do have the proper PPE and proper PPE to protect our employees. And also, we're working very hard to assure that we continue to supply our employees with the proper PPE. We have also supplied all 18 fire departments in La Porte County, as well as some of the police agencies, with the proper supplies they need and the proper PPE as well. All of our protocols have been modified to meet the state requirements. All of our employees have received proper training on disinfecting, the use of the PPE, and new hospital policies. So I just wanted to give a huge thank you to all of our employees. On March 13, in the middle of the afternoon, on a Friday afternoon, we rolled out brand-new protocols, procedures, and these were lengthy to all of our employees. And we mandated that they not only read them, but know them very well and train on them. And since then, we've rolled out three or four updates, revised versions of these protocols based on new guidelines from the state. Our employees are keeping up with these. They're being very responsible. They're doing day-to-day training and to assure that they're, they're staying safe. So I just want to send a huge thank you to all of our employees who are out there on the front lines and keeping up with all the updates and keeping up with all the emails coming from, from our department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. You know.
Madam President?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, this is Jeff Van Sant of La Porte County Council. I tried to weigh in earlier on public comment, but, you know, the phone thing just wasn't cooperating. Can I do that now, or will there be another opportunity at the end of the meeting?
You're welcome to speak anytime.
Okay, you know, I just, I just wanted to weigh in. And again, concerning the, the threads of email that we had pertaining to the courthouse project. Again, I want to applaud Joey and Shaw for raising, you know, for putting in their, their letters and comments. And I'm glad that my, my email raised some eyebrows. And, and I was looking, you know, again, for more feedback on what I, what I put out there, and what my feelings have been and pretty much will continue to be. But, but I wanted to say to every, to everyone and all that did receive this, it's always better for me, at least, to verbalize. And if you have any questions or want to make any comments, please call me, reach out to me, and, and I'll be glad to explain my position. Again, like I said at the meeting the other night, I was, I wasn't a popular vote, obviously. It was, it was six to one with me being the one named. And, and I stuck to my guns, and I know it wasn't popular. But I think it is something I've explained now that, that needs to, you know, be addressed and, and reevaluate it, the situation that we're in. And so that, that, that's my comment, I guess, right now. And again, I, I just, I just feel that, I guess that's the best word. It's time for us to reevaluate. And again, not, not, not shelf this thing, you know, to the, to the, to the degree that it's not going to happen. But again, that's, that's what I think we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning. This is Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. I just wanted to remind our county employees that back on March 18, the Commissioners did put into place our Employee in Operations policy. And basically, that policy is going to provide our employees who have a diagnosis of the COVID-19 come in contact with a person who has a confirmed case, have signs or symptoms, or even living with someone who has a diagnosis or symptom. And there's a couple others. But this policy, we're granting our employees paid leave time as outlined in the policy. And while we sincerely appreciate all our county employees and their work ethic, I think now is the time that we truly need to be conscious of our actions and the efforts that our actions could have on others. So if we have any county employees who are ill, that are possibly having symptoms of the COVID-19, please stay home. And on those lines too, I think it's also important to remind everyone too that not everybody who is sneezing or coughing has COVID-19. We are coming into the allergy season. So if there's any employees or a department head that's out there that has questions or needs any guidance regarding their situation, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Mar. Madam President, I, I have a couple of comments regarding the personnel. First thing, I want to remind everyone that the COVID-19 testing, the testing of COVID-19 for all county employees who are on county health insurance, there is no copay. So there is no copay, no out-of-pocket cost for the test. That's number one. Number two, in these difficult times, if any of our county employees need to see a physician on a, on a telemedicine basis, like a Teladoc. Teladoc is the company that the county health insurance is contracted with. And there is no copay for that also. So it is fully covered. And I'd urge Ms. Mossman to remind all the department heads that the department's heads have the full authorization to use the staff in their department the way they feel fit to make sure the essential services are being rendered. And then if the others can work remotely from home, I think they need to utilize that. I think we need to remind that. And if somebody is sick, definitely, please, 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 don't come to work. And then lastly, Barb, I want to, you to send a reminder to all the department heads that if there are, there's anybody in the staff who have underlying medical conditions that predispose them to COVID-19 infection, please encourage them to keep them at home and have them work remotely. Those are some of my concerns, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cora.
Thank you.
Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Madam President, I'm May.
Yes, Mr. Alt.
I'm Director of La Porte County Animal Control. I just kind of want to feed off of Andrew's statement and let the public know that we are being given the guidelines by the CDC. Andrew is really good about providing those to me and to our dispatchers. And I just want the public to be aware that when they call 911, there is going to be some screening questions that are going to be asked, especially if it's in the medical area, for an ambulance. And I don't want the public to think that we're not sending them help. Help is on the way, and we have, we have the means to ask these questions while somebody else is dispatching the proper public safety entities. So I don't want them to feel that we're delaying any response time. Your, your public safety person is coming right away, but we have to ask these questions to protect all of us, including themselves, in public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Those screening calls are really important. And, you know, 911 dispatch is, is truly the first response in this regard. And by you screening, you're keeping our, our EMS teams and our law enforcement safe. So the public should know that while emergency responders are coming, the screening is also helping make sure that we're prepared when we arrive. So thank you to all the emergency response teams out there. You truly are the men and women of the hour, our unsung heroes. Whether you're manning a dispatch phone or you are a transport person, you are really the, the heroes of the day, as well as our healthcare providers and our nurses at the Health Department and all the healthcare workers across the county. So anyone else wish to speak at this time? We'll move on with the agenda.
Hi, Director Butcher, Director of Emergency Management for La Porte County. I just want to say that I do continue to try and obtain as much PPE as I can to be able to supply to Andrew, the EMS director, whom I consider the gatekeeper of all equipment and PPE for the county that goes out to, like, the sheriff and the police departments. If anyone has any needs, whether it be sheriff or even anyone, anyone in the county that has any needs for PPE, please send it to me in an email, and I will continue to address the state and the local DOC as, as to the PPE that I can get. We do know, and Dr. Cora knows, that eventually PPE is going to be something that is, is already scarce. And I think it's going to come in time where N95 or surgical masks are going to have to be worn on a regular basis. So I am tasked with getting as much equipment as I possibly can. And thanks for everyone from the Commissioner's Secretary who has, has ordered stuff and helped me tremendously in obtaining equipment. And any needs that you guys may have, please continue to send it to me. And I will make it my duty to, to obtain as much PP as I can. That's, that's basically all that I have.
Madam President, I have a comment. Mr. Butcher, sometimes, I, I hope, Larry, you don't think that I'm pressuring you about PPE. But the reason I keep asking about PPE is because our frontline folks, whether they are EMS or EMA or nurses or physicians or in the hospitals, nursing homes, clinics, if we can provide them PPE, you know, they're already working under some very difficult circumstances. The least we can do is to provide them PP. So that's the reason why I'm always looking out for more PP, and I keep pushing you to get, get more PP. And I hope you understand that, and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Dr. Cora, at this time, trust me, I'm 300-plus pounds, and I don't, I don't, I don't have thin skin at all. So just, just, just keep it coming and anything you need. Just however you say it, or however you do it, I'm more than willing to help.
All right, thank you.
Director Butcher, you've done an incredible job. And, you know, I guess this is a good time to shout out to all the folks that are on, on the call or who are listening. You know, we have a twice-a-week meeting of the COVID Operations Response Team. And about yesterday, we had a meeting, it's a Tuesday and Thursday at 3 o'clock. And yesterday, I think 28 people logged on at various times. And it's a communication device. But what it really has shown me is how, how dedicated our county team is. Whether you are a rapid-response person from the, you're from the judiciary, you're a health department, you are EMA or EMS, law enforcement, animal shelter. I mean, everyone is working together. They're exchanging information. And IT has been absolutely incredible. Without Darlene and her team, some of us would be in a world of hurt. She's made it easy for people to work remotely and to keep essential services rolling. Her team has been troubleshooting, helping some folks who may not be real comfortable with Zoom or with some technology pieces. And they, you know, they've shortened our learning curve and made sure everyone is comfortable. So can't say enough great things about, about IT and then some of the other departments that I mentioned. Everyone has really pulled together, and I think it's, it's a pretty incredible effort during a high-stress time. All right, let's move on to requests. Do we have any requests on the agenda? Anyone? All right, let's move on to old business. Consider bid recommendation for Bridge 77 and 78, Mr. Sullivan, the engineer. I wonder if he's on. Anyone have any significant information on, on this?
Yes, Madam President, members of the Commission, we've reviewed this particular, the recommendations given, and I believe it should be in your package.
Yes.
Yes.
And.
So the recommendation is for Larson and Danielson for Bridge 77 and 78?
That's correct. Based on the bid evaluation done by the department head, that, that's his recommendation.
I make a motion to approve, to approve this recommendation and then also give him permission to approach the council.
Second motion?
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation for Bridge 77 and 78. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved to pass it on to the county council. Next on the agenda, consider Otis Road time extension contract with Indot.
Madam President, there's B, the USI, for bridge inspection.
Yes, there's been a, the three-party committee review of the recommendations. But I believe the auditor had a question and about this being a three-year contract. And you may want to defer. And I don't know if Ms. Winsky wants to weigh in at this point, but she had expressed some concern about it being a three-year contract as opposed to a traditional one-year contract.
Yes, I, I don't think that, at this point, we should be allowing or granting a three-year contract on anything. I think that normally, we only grant a one-year contract or you only grant a one-year contract on most contracts with the county. And I see this as, as being no different, especially in this time. So I, I would ask you, if you're going to approve it, approve a one-year contract only.
And that's certainly consistent, I mean, it would, with, with her recommendation that she made in my office. And so we're, we're comfortable as well recommending that, based on the evaluation process, USI apparently came in on top based on the scoring. But we would recommend a one-year contract as opposed to the three-year contract.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve a one-year contract with USI for the bridge inspection.
Before I second that, I got a question. Would, would this ensure that the price doesn't go up every year by locking it in for three years now? That it would be the same price for three years? Whereas if we have to rebid it again next year, nothing ever goes down? That it would be more money? I'm just asking the question. Joey, maybe you could tell me what your thoughts are on that? Every year, we're going to pay a little bit more? Would it be more prudent to go ahead and lock it in for three years? I'm just asking.
Well, I, I haven't seen the contract. The only thing I, the only thing, excuse me, I can tell you is that the cost of the three years is $243,000. And I think that's a cost that we don't need to incur right now.
Madam, my auditor, do we have to pay all the money upfront?
Well, that, that's, that's a good question. Probably not, but, you know, our financial situation at this present time is okay. It's the future that we're looking at, the future of lost revenues due to loss of income that's in our seatage and cadget. The, the future loss of our tax dollars. As you all know, our distribution in May this year will only be for a portion of the taxes that are owed because the governor has given all taxpayers a kind of a reprieve on penalties, which means that you can pay your taxes up and until July 11 without the penalty applied. So we don't know how that's going to, how, what, what that's going to translate in tax dollars to us. We, we will still be doing our regular tax settlement, but we expect to only receive about 50% of our collections at that time. That's, that's an estimate. So, so it's not this year that we're worried about so much. It's future years.
Madam President, if it is okay with you, I'll withdraw my motion, and maybe we can bring it back at the next meeting.
You could perhaps table it, but keep in mind that the bridge inspection is very hotly contested anyway. I think there were eight or nine firms that competed over it. So there's nothing to say that if you did a one-year contract that there wouldn't be similar interest next year in, in doing it.
Excuse me, John, or Jay Sullivan has a comment.
Oh, you're there, okay. You're going.
Does Jay, does everybody hear me?
No.
Can you speak up, Jay, if you don't mind?
Guys, for some reason when I went there. What's up?
We're unable to hear you.
Hold on, Jay.
Darlene, we're unable to hear him. Okay, try again, Jay.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then I thought, guys, I can see everybody on my screen. For some reason, they won't let me talk and I phoned in. Good morning, this is Jay Sullivan, county engineer.
Good morning, Mr. Sullivan.
In regards to the USI contracts for the bridge inspections, that is an 80-20 grant from INDOT and they pay, it's a four-year phased-in process where it's not just, it's not like it's a yearly contract, it's one contract for four years and there's four phases to the inspections. And they kind of piggyback on top of each other. They're not separate inspections, they're actually a continuation of the inspections for the bridges. So I, I mean, I, I would recommend to, you know, consider that as one contract. Yeah, it's, it's, it might even be a federal requirement, yes.
A cool question, Jay. If it is deferred for the next meeting, does that pose a problem in terms of the deadline of responding?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you. What did you say?
If, if it is.
If we postpone this till the next meeting, are you under a time deadline? Or can we review it a little bit more and bring it back for consideration at the next meeting?
I, I do not see that. I do know that I have gotten some emails from INDOT requesting they continue the process and verify the branch. They do need to sign contracts by the commissioners. But I can talk to everybody, let them know that it will be two weeks and we can, you know, maybe get that. I don't think that would be a big stumbling block, no.
Yeah, question I would be, that I would have is, like Joey said, we don't pay this all upfront for something that's going to take three years to take, to get done, that it probably comes in, in.
Increments, yeah.
Increment. And since it's an 80-20 grant, we don't want to lose that.
Right, right.
So if it's not going to cause a problem to, to delay it for two weeks, then I'd be, I'd be okay with that. Otherwise, I would move on it today.
I'll make a motion to table and reconsider at, at our next meeting.
I'll say that.
All right, thank you. Is that okay, Jay?
Yeah, two weeks will be fine. I, you are very hard to understand, but if it's two more weeks, yes, I don't think that, I can make that happen.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table this for two weeks to be reconsidered at our next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to new business then, right?
No, there's an Otis Road time.
Oh, yeah, Otis Road, okay, sorry. Next on the agenda is the Otis Road time extension with INDOT. And Mr. Sullivan, this is yours as well, can you speak to this?
Go ahead, Jay. This is the Otis Road project?
Yes.
And this is the time extension on the Otis Road project because you did have some issues with the Lincoln Bridge. And it is not, it's not going to cost the county any more money. The contractor just wanted an extension so they could get the, you know, do the extra work and get them done, get the job done properly. We already gave them some extra money because of that. This is just an extension of that, would be no money required, so.
Okay.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Commission, we reviewed the extension contract and are comfortable recommending.
Okay, great.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Otis Road time extension contract with INDOT. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been passed. Next on the agenda under new business, consider a supplement to the Lincoln Trail contract extension of the current deadline, Mr. Bishop.
Good morning, Christian.
Good morning.
How are you doing? That's a little misleading on the agenda. It isn't like a contract extension, it's more like a contract amendment to include archaeological surveys. This, this should remind you, this project, this trail project goes from 300 South along the old Monon Trail, west of PNW. And that north portion, that is not disturbed land, that would go east to 421, that's the area where the archaeological survey is done, that's the need for this contract amendment. It's $19,000, of which $15,200 I was able to receive as a grant. So I'm asking for your signatures today and then permission to attend the council in May for the 1800. That'd be the 20%. I believe Shaw reviewed it.
Yes. It is just a contract amendment, a supplement, and so we're recommending the approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the Lincoln Trail contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Consider permission to approach. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Consider permission to approach the council for construction of the left turn signal addition to 400 North and Johnson Road intersection. And this is Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Not, not yet.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, this was, I was asked looking to, to construct dedicated turn signals, turn lanes for, for the 400 North and Johnson Road project. I do want to say that INDOT did investigate this prior to construction and they determined that dedicated, you know, left turn lights were not necessary for this, this project. And therefore, the cost of this would be, have to be absorbed by the county in its entirety. The cost estimates that I did get for the installation of those left turn signals would be just shy of $9,300. So I guess I'm asking permission to approach the council to see if they would approve that $9,300. That could possibly be absorbed by the county highway department through CEDIT, but I would need to verify that through the council.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve and allow Mr. Sullivan to approach the council.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion to allow Mr. Sullivan to approach the council regarding the left turn signal addition at 400 North and Johnson Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been passed. Next on the agenda, consider the first reading of a proposed contractor payroll fraud ordinance presented by John Carr and Nick Pollak, Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters.
The proposed ordinance in front of you, which would be considered on first reading, would have the county be consistent with ordinances already adopted by the city of La Porte, city of Michigan City to deal with this persistent issue of contractor fraud. We've made some modifications to the model ordinance that was prepared, but I'll let both Nick and John speak to the merits of the ordinance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good thanks.
If you could introduce yourself just for the record.
Okay, my name's John Carr. I am with the Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters and the La Porte, Sarkin, Plaski Building Trades. And this guy here next to me is.
I'm Nick Pollak. I'm with the Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters as well, out of Lowell, 1485 here in La Porte.
So this ordinance basically just puts some language in place to prevent contractors from paying their employees cash. This is something that is becoming rampant in the construction industry where, let's say, a contractor gets the drywall portion of a hotel project and then the contractor they subbed it out to ends up paying all their workers cash, which, you know, leaves municipalities deprived of local taxes. And it creates unfair advantage for our local law-abiding contractors who pay their workers' comp, payroll taxes and, and whatnot. So it creates like a 20 to 30% advantage for, you know, contractors using this business model. And it's something that we see happening more and more in the construction industry, usually in the wood framing and drywall sector of projects, but it's happening on commercial projects, residential projects. And Northwest Indiana's kind of taken the, the lead in passing ordinances throughout just about every municipality from Lowell all the way to Michigan City and everything in between. So La Porte County would be the first county to pass it, which, you know, me being a La Port County resident is something that I would be proud of to see the county that I live in pass ordinance like this. That we need to protect our local tradesmen and our local contractors in regards to, you know, some of these unscrupulous contractors paying their workers cash. So I thank you for considering it and, you know, we really appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Mr. Punk?
I think Mr. Carr pretty much covered everything that I would have said on this. There is one point I'd like to make. I believe it was the second paragraph pretty much sums up everything that we're trying to get passed here. It's all about tax dollars. Sitting here through this meeting today, it sounds like with everything that's going on right now, tax dollars are, you know, going to be going away. It's going to be even harder to fund some projects. So I think any way that we can collect what is owed by law, we should go that route and make, and hold everybody accountable on a level playing field. So other than that, I'd just like to say thanks for your consideration.
Thank, thank you very much. The ordinance is here on first, first reading. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this ordinance at this time? All right, we will hear it on second reading at our next meeting, correct?
Right. I'll make a motion to adopt it on first reading.
Okay.
I second your motion, sir.
We have a motion to adopt it on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the claims, consider resolution regarding the timely deposit of funds and approval of, I believe it's February 7th, claims.
Yes, this was recommended in response to one of the governor's executive orders. Various governmental entities around the state are adopting resolutions similar to this to allow for timely resolution of claims. If for some reason the board cannot meet to approve claims, then the executive officer, the president is, is authorized to sign those claims. So this gives you some needed flexibility. It's, it's been adopted by governmental entities throughout the state in the last two weeks. We're recommending consideration of that at this time.
A motion to approve, Madam President.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution allowing some flexibility in regards to our funding of government essential operations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Madam President, I should mention as well, because you raised the issue of flexibility, I sent to the commissioners, to the council president and to the council attorney, along with the auditor yesterday, brand new state board of accounts guidance, which provides, as you requested in your resolution two weeks ago, some needed flexibility so that if in certain circumstances, there may be certain fund surpluses that could be used for COVID-related expenses, there, and, and an ordinance is passed by the commission after, after review by my office, it gives you some additional flexibility to cover some of these expenses. So that is exactly what you asked for in the resolution that you adopted, which the council also adopted, which was provided and sent down to the commission, to the governor's office by our legislators. So we're very pleased to receive that and we'll make sure all members of the council have it as well, but it is exactly the kind of flexibility that you were seeking here two weeks ago.
Thank you. Do we need to do anything else on the courthouse or we?
I think we have done.
We passed that, okay. All right, next on the agenda, we are finished with our normal order of business. We have commissioners' comments. Commissioner Marzinski?
Yeah, we did have a couple of positive things that have happened over the last couple of weeks. I got a email from a friend of mine in Indianapolis who told me about a wounded warrior there who has a distillery and he has changed over to, instead of making whiskey, damn him, he's going to be making hand sanitizer.
Right.
And I forwarded that contact information to Tony and Andrew. Not only is it another resource, but it's a wounded warrior, come on, let's help him out. I also had two other sources for masks where we can purchase masks in case we, you know, if we need more, this is some contact information. And also from a local businessman, a guy who's been a friend of mine for probably 50 years, sent me an email out of the blue and said, hey, can the county use some more N95 masks? And I said, heck yeah. So I forwarded that to Tony. Thank you, my friend, Kim Sowers. You know, this confinement that has caused everybody's demeanor to kind of change, tempers are kind of on edge, you know, a lot of uncertainty about what's going on in the future. I, I remind everybody that everybody's got their own little cross to bear. There's still, life goes on, there's still other people suffering through other things that we don't know about and we don't even need to know about. But we just need to show a little respect for each other and remember that a lot of us have been through tougher stuff than this. If we just hang together, keep calm, keep your tempers under control, stay home if you possibly can, and let's get through this. My hat goes off to Dr. Cora. I mean, being a commissioner right now is stressful, but being a commissioner and a doctor, God bless you, my brother.
Thank you, thank you very much. And by the way, words of wisdom, I appreciate that, you know, thank you, appreciate that. Madam President, I wanted to talk a little bit about some health care issues related to COVID-19. Most of our listening public are probably aware, but just a reminder that the surge that is anticipated in our state is going to happen over the next two weeks. So it is very, very important that you take this seriously and stay home. If you don't need to be out, just stay home. And if you are in the business of providing essential services, just provide the essential service and then get home like I'm doing. And so, and also one of the suggestions I'm going to make to the listening public is it is not proven, but I think it's prudent to use a mask or, or a bandana or scarf or anything that you can use to protect yourself, especially when you go out in public, especially like when you're going to buy groceries and things like that. So I think it's, it's a wise thing to do. Some of my patients ask me what, what should they do to improve their immunity? And because for this COVID-19, there is no treatment and there is no vaccine at this time. You know, obviously, people are working on it, hopefully in a few months we are going to get that. But till then, the best thing we can do is to do social distancing and stay at home till this peak goes away. And what it will do is it will flatten the curve. And flattening the curve means it, instead of having a big spike where the healthcare system cannot handle, it'll flatten the curve and then that way the healthcare system can handle it. Because our capacity to handle a large number of patients coming through our doors at the same time is limited. So please help yourself and help your neighbors, your family members by staying at home. And to improve the immunity, I think the regular things like having a good nutrition, eating fruits and vegetables and nuts, et cetera, adding them to the diet, exercise, regular and adequate sleep, having a schedule. Prayer is a good thing. You know, I don't know what it does at a metaphysical level, I'm not an expert on that, but I really felt all my life that prayer helps by reducing stress, improving a sense of optimism, a sense of gratitude. And I think those are all good things to improve our, our immunity and meditation and mindfulness, all these things are very, very important. We have all seen on the television the stress that the healthcare systems have been under in New York, New Jersey and Connecticut. So I think if we can stay home, I think that'll be great. And one of the requests I have for the employers of businesses who are essential businesses is please let those people who are on your staff, who have significant underlying medical problems, let them stay home. I think it's really important that we protect the most vulnerable. Now, they're also seeing a lot of young people getting COVID-19 infection, which is unfortunate, but the people who have underlying problems are definitely at a higher risk. We will continue to work with the hospital systems, Franciscan, La Porte and Beacon, all of them have numbers that people can reach out to it and it's, they're all on our website and to get, get the testing done. And as our EMA director, Mr. Butcher, had mentioned, PPE is a priority for all the frontline healthcare workers and we want to continue to work on it. And again, I want to thank the staff at our health department and they will continue to do the work they, they have been assigned to do. And we will continue to monitor their needs in terms of staffing and we'll make sure that if they need more help, that we'll provide them more help. I also want. I also wanted to thank all the staff of our county who have done a phenomenal job in these difficult times. And Dan, I want to particularly thank you, you know, you have not missed a day since this whole thing started, so thank you for your diligence, I appreciate that. And lastly, I want to thank all my colleagues, doctors, nurses, physical therapists, respiratory therapists, at all the hospitals, clinics, nursing homes, everybody is really out there every morning doing their work under some trying circumstances, and I'm eternally grateful to all of them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cora.
Madam President, just a programming note I received, we were to, many folks have had difficulty getting online with some of the state conferences, and we were just advised that ALCO will be televising Governor Holcomb's live address today at 1:30.
Oh, that's.
On channel 97, so we wanted to advise.
Is it 1:30 Central Time?
1:30 apparently is, is what's listed on the text that I just got.
Great, thank you. So before we close, I, I wanted, we, Commissioner Marzinski talked about, there has to be some good news somewhere. So one of the good news pieces is that from January through the launch of our new website on March 4th, we had 8,000 unique visitors, and they spent about 55 seconds of their day between January, February on our county website. We launched on March 4th, and since that time, and today is what, March, April 1st, we've had 25,000 unique visitors. That means that many of them, like me, come back day after day, I'm only counted once, so 25,000 unique visitors, and they now spend two minutes plus on our website. So our, obviously our timing was good, but we have a COVID-19 page on that website where we are multiple times daily updating with, with data, with information from the CDC, information from our health department, from our, our local employers. So if anyone needs information, that is the place to go. We also are encouraging people who are asking the county for daily updates on the COVID data. If you can't wait for the county to update the website, you can go to the state health department website, at 10:00 AM every morning, they update the count to the best of the information that is given to them, so you can go to the, the state health department website yourself and find that out. You know, I talk to a lot of people, as my colleagues do every day, and people are feeling concerned, they're feeling stressed, they're feeling helpless, you know, Dr. Cora, I appreciate you putting some parameters around that, because people want to be able to do something. And I guess the thing that they need to do is to stay home if at all possible. Our parents, and there's many, many parents that are out there in our county, who are now not just a mom or a dad or a grandma or a grandpa, they are now teachers, they are now cooks and cheap bottle washers where they're normally, our, our teachers, our educators take some of that responsibility. Our, our education system now are, they're feeding our kids. So all the school systems have done a remarkable job trying to figure out how to be responsive to hungry children. You know, as a former teacher, I can tell you that there are times where your heart kind of breaks for kids, because they are sad when their school day ends or their summer vacation comes, because they know that they're not gonna have access to good food. And our school systems and our parents are meeting that need, and so I want to commend the parents who are using the web to find all kinds of interesting things for their kids to do, they're doing science experiments out in the backyard and trying to figure out ways to keep their children healthy and happy. So my hat off to those folks who are doing extra, extra duty. And I guess I, I want to talk about just a little bit, the county team, I mentioned how grateful we are for the unbelievable dedication from IT to health department to law enforcement to EMS, EMA, dispatch, unbelievable, the responsibilities they have. But you know, in, in a tough time, the best of humanity comes forward, and I think that's what we're, we need to talk about, we need to applaud people who are putting their best foot forward, they're trying to be cheerful and to, to cast goodness, because at this time, that's what we really need to do. So be a good neighbor, be a good American, stay home if you can, look out for our elders, and make sure that if there's anyone in need in your community, you can put a pot of soup on their, on their back steps and let them know that there's food for them. So at this time, let's pull together as LaPorte County cares. Thank you, and with that, the meeting.
Motion, Georgia, thank you.